Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Northampton Township Board of Supervisors meeting for Wednesday, July 28th, 2021 to order. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic for its fans, our nation, under God, indivisible, with the breathing justice for all.
Thank you. And we have no flag presentation tonight, but we do have a special presentation tonight. As many of you know, we've been struggling with our trash and recycle services. And so we do have representatives from JP Mascaro Trash here tonight. And we have Sam Augustine and Al DiGennaro. And you guys can come to the front table, please, and I'll let you formally introduce yourself and say what you do for the company and tell us what you'd like to present. Thank you.
I'm Al DiGennaro. How's that? Okay. Yeah, as I said, I'm Al DiGennaro, and with me is Sam Augustine. I've been with the company forty years, thirty years, and Sam's been here forty years. We've been here many times before. More pleasant circumstances, my presentation is honest, I'm not sure how special it is, but it's honest. And it's that, first of all, we appreciate our relationship with the township. We've had the contract probably three or four times, which I believe takes us about twenty years. And we're appreciative of the business and proud of our relationship. And we don't take you for granted. Conversely, we're a little embarrassed, to be polite, with what is happening in our industry and about our service, because we know that over these years, we provided you with good service on whole, not to say there weren't bumps or bruises, but since the pandemic, it's been a real challenge for us. As you can well imagine what last year's challenges were, we managed to get through those and thought come January, we had turned a corner. And by the time we got to spring, the next challenge is we have a really labor problem, to be candid with you. Not making excuses. We're embarrassed, we're a family business. This was founded by the late JP Mascaro Senior. It's a fifty-year-old company. The hallmark of that business was service. If it services us, that's the reputation. Him and his five sons built a company to be a successful company throughout the Mid-Atlantic region, one of the larger ones, but the benefit of the company was it was still a family operation. You could speak to different people high up, and we were proud of our service. And unfortunately, it's, we've struggled, and we know that we've not given you what you've come to expect, not what you deserve, not what we want to give you, and frankly, not what you're paying for. So we recognize that. But I can tell you that there's a commitment on behalf of our company to try to get through this. And the things we do, commitment-wise, it's not about money. We're, you know, I don't want to say we're throwing money away, but we're putting all kinds of efforts into it. But it's a challenge, you know? Every day, we need, for example, we may need one hundred and fifty, one hundred and sixty people, and we'll have one hundred and ten to one hundred and twenty that show up. The CDL drivers are at a demand right now. You see the UPS, the, what's the, Amazon, everyone's ordering stuff. Driving trash truck isn't the most attractive job in the world, but it's an important job, it's a frontline worker. I guess if nothing else, over this pandemic, people have come to appreciate the importance of that. But it's no consolation to us that everyone's struggling in this, in our industry. I'll let Sam talk a little more about that. I can tell you that the commitment, not only is there financially, but I know that JP Mascaro III, who's the third generation of family members involved in the business, wanted to be here tonight. He's interacting with your township on a daily basis. His son is in Georgia, he had to go pick up his son, or he would be here tonight. Every day, there's at least three Mascaros of these nine nieces and nephews that run the business and trucks. And I'm not telling you that to make a big deal about it, but to say, we're struggling. Typically, what we will do is we'll have our drivers and our drivers' helpers, and we'll have our supervisors. And our supervisors are the eyes and ears of your township and where their misses, they're following up. The problem is, the supervisors are driving the trucks, so we're not having the supervision in your township that we'd like to have. Your administration, Bob and Bill, they interact with us daily. I want the residents here to know, even though they're here for Wawa, I'm sure they all have their trash picked up and recycling, and they've got issues. It's not from a lack of you're trying to hold our feet to the fire. We, you're constantly, if not you elected officials, your administrators are on us on a daily basis to ask us what we're doing, and we're doing the best we can do. And that's not, that's not adequate. So I'm here to tell you that the commitment is still here, but it's a struggle for us. Right now, today, I can tell you the honest to God's truth, I don't know if it's a coincidence, divine providence, but today was the first day we could cover every route. The last couple of days, it seems to have gotten better with the people showing up. I realize that there are legitimately people on unemployment that need unemployment, but I also have to be candid with you that some of these programs that attract some of the people that we want to put in our trucks are staying home and not coming out to work because of additional benefits from the federal government. I know those end on September 3rd. We know we're going to make through it, you know? We're a strong financial company, we've got equipment, we've got everything but the people to perform the job, but we're confident that going forward, we'll begin to do better. We really think by the end of August, we hope this is the light at the end of the tunnel from what we can see, but there's no question unfair for you to ask of us. I understand your frustration. When your residents don't get the service they want, they contact you, and you expect to be able to contact us and get what you are paying for, and that's not happening. And we're embarrassed about that, because I've been doing this between the four of us, we have seventy years' experience, have never seen anything like this. Seen some crazy times in our industry, and as I said, the largest public company in the world is Waste Managers, having the same problems. Doesn't make us feel any better, not like Misery Loves Company. We, you know, it's a genuine challenge for us. We tried to put that contingency plan in place about a year ago, so that your residents would know that if we can't get the trash on the day that it's scheduled, that we get it the next day. We started that last spring and summer. It's, it was a challenge, it's still a challenge. Your yard waste is always a challenge, but we wanted to pick up your trash first. I was talking to a gentleman here tonight, he's not happy about us not getting his yard waste regularly, and I understand that. People want their yard waste picked up, picked up every week. But if we had to leave anything lay in your community, as much as we don't want to do it, the last thing we want to lay is trash. So our priority has been, if we can't get your trash on the day it's scheduled, and you're the biggest community of the three, of Lower South, Upper South, and Northampton, you have the most, you're almost equal to, if not more, the other two townships combined. So we're running a lot of routes in here, and we're going to continue, we're going to continue. I know a while ago, we pushed your yard waste to Saturdays. I don't know how much that helped you. I know, you know, we had so many routes to run, and I know there's some talk about maybe we ought to go back to the time where, pick it up when it's scheduled, and if we can't get it, then the folks at least know we'll get it by the end of the week. But that's where we are. It's a challenge for us right now, and I'm not making excuses. I can, I can tell you that not only the solid waste industry, but the restaurants, the supermarkets. I go to this convenience store that everyone's not happy about, I see they don't have enough help, you gotta wait in line to get your cup of coffee. I call a restaurant, my wife's birthday was a couple of weeks ago, I took, wanted to take her to her favorite restaurant. Guy said, if I have help, I'll open, if I don't have help, I'm not going to be open. So that doesn't make me feel good, and that's no excuse, but it's a, it's a challenge right now. The economy's booming, but there's not enough workers, and I'm sure you folks all see that. And I just, you know, that's enough said, I think. I'll let Sam talk to you about that, answer any questions you have.
Thank you for inviting us tonight. And obviously, you know, we understand, we understand how difficult this is for you as a board, we understand how difficult it is for your residents, and as the Director of Sales for Mascaro for well over thirty years, and being with the company for forty years, I've made, I've made a good living for many years, and I'm proud of what I've done, and most of it's been based, my living has been based on selling and serving. And you can't, you can't sell if you don't serve the customer, and everybody here tonight is our customer. Your, your contract, as you know, if you've been on this board, and I know that Mr. Pellegrino knows this, your contract is one of the toughest contracts we serve, and that's in good times. That's in good times. The people generate, generate a good amount of trash here, they generate a good amount of recycling, and this is one of the toughest contracts we've had for twenty-some years because of the yard waste, because of the yard waste. It's a very difficult contract. And everybody knows that's here, this pandemic is something that nobody could ever expected, it's something that nobody had on their, on their screens, but it happened, it occurred, and we all have had to deal with it. Now, we're all tired of it, very, very tired of it. Last year, of course, was the, was the pandemic, a lot of people weren't coming to work, a lot of people didn't even have to come to work, they were working from home. But I assure you that everybody from JP Mascaro and Sons, including myself, showed up every day, and we were essential workers, we were marked as essential workers. And there were three guys in the truck, three guys in the truck, and we have women in the trucks, three in a truck that were serving this township every day, every day, okay? And again, I'm not, you know, I'm not making light of the fact that we really haven't given you the service, but we had people working every day last year, every day. And we had COVID going through our company, and I myself, and I'm not, I'm not out there, I'm not out there picking up trash, but I myself came into work every day, and in December, I spent twelve days in the hospital with COVID. Thank God I got through it, but obviously, there's, you know, COVID has been unbelievable in this country. And then, we come out of COVID this year, and we're still hearing the lingering effects of the COVID. And, you know, with, with the COVID, we're still uncertain, we're still uncertain, but again, unemployment has been out there, it's continuing to be out there, some of the states have cut it back, but the economy is roaring, it's roaring, whether it be restaurants, whether it be other service business, whether it be Amazon, whether it be, whoever, whoever, you cannot find CDL drivers. Luckily, luckily, we're an excellent company that's held on, held on to a lot of our CDL drivers, a lot of them, okay? But they can easily, you see that it says $5,000 signing bonus, you see that, okay? It's $5,000 signing bonus to go with another company. And we've seen, we've seen some of, some of our people leave. $5,000 is a lot to drivers, it's a lot, and we've seen other people leave. We have given our drivers and helpers fifteen to thirty percent in raises this year, this year, fifteen to thirty percent in raises, okay, this year, okay? So we have done everything we possibly can to bring in new people. We also have opened up, okay, we, we employ, okay, we have five operating divisions in Eastern, Eastern Pennsylvania. We hire daily at these operating divisions. However, over the past two years, we've put in, we've put in hiring centers in Pottstown, we've put in a hiring center at the end of the train, not the end of the train, but in Willow Grove, in Willow Grove, where we, last year, we, nobody was coming into that hiring center. Every day, we have thirty to thirty-five people come in, come in from Philadelphia to that hiring center, every day, thirty to thirty-five, that is working somewhere in Bucks County, that is working somewhere in Bucks County. So our company is doing everything we possibly can to deal with this crisis. And Al had pointed out that we need approximately one hundred and fifty people at this division, at this division, one hundred and fifty people, and we're getting in about one hundred and ten to one hundred and twenty every day, no matter what we have tried, no matter what we have tried. And we're retaining workers, and as Al has said, it is getting better, because workers know now, thirty days, in thirty days, the unemployment's ending, or it's supposed to end, God knows it's supposed to end, because frankly, I don't, I really don't believe, and I'm not being political, I really don't believe that the government knows how much they're hurting people, how much they're hurting people by keeping them out of the workforce, okay? But they will be back, and they're going to be back soon, okay? And we really believe that we're going to turn the corner on what we're accomplishing, okay? Frankly, I have never seen, in my forty years in business, and I mean this, I started in 1974, not with Mascaro, I've been with Mascaro since 1981, I have never seen a crazier time in the economy. And I saw in the seventies, gas lines, I remember gas lines, okay? And I have never seen a crazier time in the economy, where you, you can't, I mean, restaurants aren't opening at lunch because they don't have enough people. Who have ever heard of that? My wife went to the grocery store last week, she got up, took the dog for a walk, went to the grocery store, you still can't, some of the shelves are still empty. She was going to get vegetables at seven in the morning, figured she'd be the first one there. She said, Sam, there were no vegetables. She said, they told me that the people that were supposed to stock them overnight didn't show up. So these are the kind of things we're dealing with, the economy, and I know it's hard to be patient, it's hard to be patient, and I can understand, people are upset and are troubled, and we're truly sorry, okay? We're truly sorry, and we thank you for your patience, Al's, Al has expressed it. And we won't consider any question unfair from the board, from the residents, you know, we'll be glad to answer any, any question. So again, thank you for, you know, thank you for inviting us here tonight.
And when we leave, I just want to leave a, put together a booklet just for you to take a look at, as well, a letter from Pat Mascaro for the board and for your board personnel.
Thanks. Okay, good break time, just to stop? Okay. I forgot to mention, just before the thing's on, Mr. Paizo, our solicitor, is actually on the call, he's on Zoom, he is listening, although we don't see him, but he is here. I'll start out with the board, see if the board has any questions, and then what I'm going to do tonight is, we do have a fair amount of people here. Normally, we don't just open up for random questions, but we do have a lot of folks here. I think everybody in this room is affected by this. Everybody in the township's affected by it. So what I'll do is, I will allow, tonight at least, kind of impromptu questions, I will ask, if anybody wants to ask a question, just raise your hand, I'll call you up to the microphone in a couple of minutes. I'll call you up to the microphone, say your name and address, for the record. Please, keep the, keep the subject to this subject, okay? They're here to answer questions, and they're willing to take questions directly from the public, so we'll, we'll try to accommodate that. And many of your questions, I think, are the same questions that most people in the township and many of our viewers tonight have. So thank you for allowing the questions. Ali, and I'll start with you, if I may.
There we go. Again, thank you very much for coming out. I know that Dr. Rose asked you guys to make sure that, see if you could come out, and you said yes, and Bob called you immediately and said, okay, we want you. But the reason being is, we're also residents. So we, each of us, have our own complaints with our trash and so forth. So when someone calls and says, my trash hasn't been picked up in a week, we say, mine hasn't been in two weeks, you know, no, I'm just kidding with that. But, but, you know, so we do know what's going on. But my question is, what do you see the future looking like? Is the future looking like, after September, you're going to tell us that things are going to get back to normal? Do you think that by the end of the year, we're not going to have, you know, as many complaints that we're getting? I mean, I have to tell you, you know, Bob had said, he's gone through it, and in all the years that you have been, you know, our contractor, we've never, ever had the problems. You know, one or, you know, I don't know about one, but maybe fifteen, sixteen times in a, you know, in months, do we get people calling us and saying it wasn't picked up? So do you have any idea on when we can tell everybody things are going to get back to normal?
We, first of all, the, the yard waste is a problem, obviously, and we're getting to the end of the yard waste, which is going to make it easier for us, so you won't have to have the resources or the manpower committed as much to the yard waste.
That's not until December.
Pardon me?
That's December.
But, but, but the grass.
Oh, okay, of us, of, okay.
I mean, we know we have leaves, but I was talking to Pat Mascaro, because he said, you're coming over there tonight, you're gonna, I mean, we've talked about what we're going to say, and the truth is an absolute, I don't know if it's a defense, but it's the truth. We think, and I can honestly look in your eye and say, I'm not just saying this because we're here tonight, last week, we started to see a little uptick in the number of people that were showing up. I don't know, I don't know what it was, but Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday were three of the better days. Now, having said that, you probably will know that we missed something here, Wednesday, but I, I interact with, with the division on multiple contracts. I'm not interacting as much on this contract, because JP talks to Bob and Bill, but, but we're starting to see it changing, and honest to God, today, we had enough people, I'm not saying we had enough people to do what we normally do, but we had enough people to cover, cover every route. So I would say, optimistically, into September, certainly before the end of the year.
Okay.
But, but we think, we think closer to getting into the fall than saying the end of the year. Last year, we knew when the pandemic started, that it was going to take us till the end of the year to get there. We don't, we don't, because now we don't have the problem with the pandemic as much as we did before with contact tracing and guys staying home, we just need more people showing up. And honestly, we could be miscalculating, but we really think, you know, if you read the paper last week, the state, the state government said, we're not just going to let people sign up unemployment, no fault. Now you got to start showing two weekly efforts of trying to find a job and a job fair once every so many weeks. So all of a sudden, a certain segment of the workforce that was just staying home because they could get away with it, now maybe is getting more active. And come September 3rd, unless I'm mistaken, the federal additional benefits, and Sam said, stop unemployment, he didn't mean that, what he meant was stop the additional benefits from the federal government. The state government benefits are a certain percentage, and right now, the federal government is giving every unemployment candidate additional $300 a week. That's going to stop in Pennsylvania on September 3rd. Some states stopped it weeks ago, because they thought it was impacting the, the employers in the state Pennsylvania chose not to do that, and we think that between how it's changing, come September 3rd, a little light on the yard waste before the leaves kick up, that, you know, that's where we'll be.
Okay.
Not an exact answer, but that's the truth.
Okay.
I don't have a crystal ball.
Thank you.
You answer the next question.
First, I want to say thank you, Al. I had, I had called him many times about our residents, and my question to you is, what can our residents do when their, when their yard waste is sitting out for, I know you have a trash truck at the old police station, so now can people bring trash or, or just yard waste, or what can our residents do to, when, when they're struggling?
Well, the first, first thing is, it's a good question, and if we have a trash truck sitting there, and residents would be willing to bring their, their material to the trash truck, I would, I would say that that would be an excellent idea, however, however, as a safety precaution, if, if we could, if we could set up, if we could set up some type of hours, we would have, we would have somebody on hand that, we wouldn't have your residents operating, operating the blade. We'd have to have somebody on hand to, to operate that blade, and if you, and it'd probably be best if it was only done for yard waste. You know, you'd have to use a different, you'd have to use a different truck for trash, because it can't be mixed. But possibly, that could be set up on a, on a Saturday, because, let me tell you, we didn't get to say everything, but the problem with service hasn't been trucks. We have, we have more than, I mean, we have, we have more than enough trucks to serve our customers, okay? We, we, we have an abundance of everything but people, we don't have the people. So it's a good question, and if something could be set up with the management here, we would look into that, and having somebody just operated the, the vehicle while, while people brought their, brought their yard waste. If they didn't think it was inconvenient to bring it over, they wanted to bring it over on the weekend, one of the gentlemen said here that, that he doesn't do his yard until, until Fridays, we moved everything to Saturdays for yard waste. Some people might be doing their yard waste on Saturdays, therefore, they can't get it picked up until the following Saturday. So, you know, that, that is a, that is a.
I just want to add something that would make it easier for us. The best way for us to collect yard waste is in the biodegradable bags. The guy goes down the street, grabs the bag, throws it in. I can't tell you how much more difficult it is when the yard waste is in a container, a plastic container. If it sits out, it gets wet, that stuff can weigh seventy-five, eighty pounds when it's wet, and when it gets wet in the container, the water doesn't filter out, where, at least with the biodegradable bag. So that helps us if it's in a biodegradable bag. Now, I know it's a cost, and people want to put things in the containers, but if you ask what could residents do, that would certainly make it a little easier, because it's easier to collect that. If you had a block full of biodegradable bags versus a block full of round containers, I can't tell you the difference in how, and how easier it would be to pick that block up with the biodegradable bags.
Okay. The other thing I wanted to ask too, is now what, what, when one of our residents, their yard waste has been sitting out there like two or three weeks, and I have people that even said four weeks, and it is wet in the biodegradable bags, it's wet, it's mushy, it's sitting there, should they call the township, or should they call you guys, or where, where should they call and what should they do?
First thing is, is, again, we've apologized, but the fact of the matter is, is we need to, we need to have better communication with the township on the calls we're getting to make sure that these, these misses are being picked up. Obviously, our supervisors are in trucks, which causes, which causes problems with understanding where the misses are, but when the people call in, it should be followed up on, and certainly, the, the yard waste shouldn't be sitting for more than a week. I mean, if it's over a week, somebody should be, should be out to pick up that yard waste. So again, with.
Should our residents call you, or they should call Mascaro and not the township?
Yes.
Do both?
Or both?
Well, they should call us, and if they're not getting satisfaction, then, then obviously, the squeaky wheel gets the grease, but they should call us, and we should be tracking, tracking these calls and following up on these calls. I agree with Al, it's going to get better, it's going to get better, and I know it's been a long time, but it's going to get better, and I believe it's going to get better soon.
Bob?
Let me just jump in here. We track every resident call every day, and every day, at the end of the day, we email the list to your company. The problem is, it doesn't always get picked up, even when we email the list. And there are a lot of repeat customer complaints. I can, I can name six addresses in my head, where I've talked to residents and they call continually. And as JP Mascaro III told me, and he had a really good explanation for this, he told me that eighty percent of our township, and this is my number, eighty percent of our township is not seeing a problem. There's a consistent twenty percent that is, and that twenty percent consists of the new drivers that you guys keep rotating in and out, because they either start and they don't stay, or they start and they're unfamiliar with the routes, and that's where the misses occur. So the addresses that I. So the addresses that I can cite off the top of my head are, are the, the areas where you have new drivers that are not familiar with the routes. You guys need a better GPS system in your trucks, and you need some kind of system to tell the drivers when to turn and where. Because I understand they're still looking at paper maps. That's, that, they can't look at paper maps and drive a trash truck and not miss households. And I think that's the biggest part of the problem. We want residents to call us, because we want to track the calls. We want to know how many people are being missed. They can call you, and frankly, I, I'll tell you, your, your call center, it's hit or miss. I don't think residents get any satisfaction by calling your call center. It's when they call us, and we send you the list of addresses, and then we continually follow up, that's when it finally gets picked up. And sometimes it does take two and three weeks, particularly for yard waste. And you've, you've said that is the biggest problem, and I agree with you. We established the, the priority of trash and then recycling and yard waste, because trash is critically important to be collected. You all know why. I don't have to explain that. But the problem is, there's not enough follow-up, and it could be because you don't have enough employees, and I'm not discounting that at all, but there's not enough follow-up with the addresses that we send you. And we send them repeatedly. We have, besides my time and Mr. Wirt's time, and two other paid people who do nothing but take trash calls all day and log them for us. And believe me, we have logs and records and details. Even have our police going out and taking pictures to follow up, to see video, to make sure if we get a call that a whole street is missed, the next day, we have an officer go out and video the street to see if that trash has been picked up the next day. So we've got plenty of documentation. We, we, we just need you guys to, to pick it up. And that's really the problem. And as far as the trash truck here at the police, the old police station, you've been very good about providing us, and JP has been very good about providing us with a vehicle and an operator on Saturdays, Sundays, and Mondays. They're here from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And residents, if they are so inclined, can bring yard waste only to that vehicle. We do not have a separate receptacle for trash or recycling. But the real problem is the follow-up, Al. That's the real problem, Sam.
Can I just jump in?
It's not happening.
One point, because I want to make sure that we have clarity on this issue. Bob, if someone needs to report that their trash, their recycles, or their yard waste have not been picked up, do you want them to call the township? Or do you want them to call Mascaro? Because there's two messages here right now, and it's not clear. And I think we have to give clear instructions for folks that need additional service.
Well, I, I would have to, that's a very good question. I think there needs to be clarity. Ideally, they should be able to call Mascaro and have the follow-up without calling the township.
I agree.
I do not have the confidence that there will be any follow-up if they call your call center. Because we've had numerous occasions where they've called your call center and then told me the responses, and I know they're wrong. They'll say, we'll be out the next day. Well, that never happens. And it doesn't happen the day after that, and it doesn't happen the day after that, and then they call us. Now, there's two or three days of wasted time because there hasn't been follow-up, and then we have to get on, we have to log that information and send it to you, and then there's further delay. So frankly, I think it would be better if they just called the township and let us log it, and let us be the conduit to have you follow up. But there has to be follow-up. That's the clear message.
So the clear message is gonna be to call the township, and the township will notify Mascaro of missed pickups on a daily basis, and then you guys will commit to follow up on that list. I will tell you, and we'll move on just on that note, the most common feedback that I get are the frustration of folks calling your company, almost every day. I mean, they just don't, they feel like it's just going nowhere. So is that, is that it, Kim? Barry?
Yeah, should we have a special number, Bob, they call, post on the website, or how do you want to?
They call the main, I'm sorry. They can call our main number. We do, we did set up a, a separate extension just for trash calls.
Okay.
So if residents have to talk to someone, that's fine. But if you leave your information on that separate line, we check it every day multiple times. We take down the information, and by the end of the day, that information gets sent over to the company, to Mascaro for follow-up the next day.
And also the email, the receptionist.
And you can also email. That's another good way to do it, if you don't need to talk to somebody, if you're really frustrated and you have to talk to a live person. Sometimes it's me, sometimes it's our reception desk, sometimes it's Mr. Wirt. That's fine. But I can't do anything more than what I just explained to you as a follow-up with the company. But we have a, we have an email address. If you email your information, if residents email us in at receptionist@ournhtwp.org, that's receptionist@nhtwp.org. It's the same process. We'll take that information the same day. Then information gets transmitted to the company, and we expect them to follow up with that.
Yeah, the only thing I was gonna add too, I do appreciate you coming out tonight, and you know, it's a tough situation with, with the employment, everything else. One of the things I do personally, and I encourage other residents to do, is that, you know, I, I assume the fact that you're gonna miss trash occasionally, things like that, and some areas other. I actually make sure my garbage is very secure in black plastic, plastic bags. You know, I, I almost put it out there with the condition saying, it's gonna be out there maybe for a week or so, sometimes. And, you know, in the past, a lot of times people just put their trash, and they kind of stack it up, and you see it blowing all over the place. So if I put trash in front of my house, you know, our new policy is that we put it in a secure bag, we lock it down, we kind of stack it, so it's not getting blown all over the place. And, you know, maybe with yard waste too, I don't know if we should do the same thing with that, putting a black plastic, plastic bag. I know, you know, it impacts the environment a little bit, but, but if you wait a week or two with the environmental bags, they all fall apart. And during this situation, maybe we should do black past, plastic. Can you take, you can't take plastic?
You don't take them.
You can't, you can't take plastic bags with yard waste.
Yard waste?
Yeah, at composting facilities.
Okay, okay. Yeah. But certainly the regular trash, you could, if it's securely and that.
The yard waste can be put in open containers, just because people use the same containers sometimes for their trash, and then it can be put into the, the bags, the, the bags.
Sure, okay. That's all I have.
Our esteemed chair just asked me if we could set up another email address that just says trash@nhtwp.org. And we will set that up. So if anyone is listening that has a problem, tomorrow we'll set that email address up, and it will be the same process. We'll take the information down. If you email us, whenever you email us during the day between our regular business hours, we will take that information. It will be sent over to JP Mascaro by the end of the day for follow-up. And that's trash@nhtwp.org. I think that's a great idea.
That'll help. Right?
I think everybody's covered it pretty well. I really don't have anything to add what's already been said.
Thanks. I, I just, just a couple of things to add. My street has been, was consistently missed for many weeks. I will say this week, both my trash and recycles was picked up on the right day. So this is, I, I'm hoping that some of that light that you saw is, is real, because today, this week was the first time for us that I've seen that in quite a long time. I do recognize the labor shortage and, and the issue. I think we, we all do. I think, you know, as, as Bob pointed out, you know, having people call, whether it's you or, or the township, and leave a message is the most unsatisfying phone call anybody can ever make in their life, leaving a message at the government. Really, and people, it's so, because you get no feedback, you have no idea where it went. We know where it's going, you know, they're, every day they're handling these. And, and, and everybody in the township should really be assured that every message is documented and sent every day. But it doesn't feel like that when your trash has been there for a long time. So you can understand that this, it compounds, that it just boils and boils and boils. So, but we do appreciate you coming here. I know, I know you've been serving us for over 20 years, and mostly flawlessly, you know, up until, until recently. And I think we do recognize that, and I think most of the people in the township recognize it. But your nose doesn't lie, you know? And I think you can all, all appreciate that.
Adam, can I just say one thing?
Sure, please.
I, I just want all our residents to know that we hear you. We, we, we have been doing anything to try to get this resolved, and I'm so glad that, that I talked to Al and that he came out for this difficult conversation. But I just want our residents to know that we, we are on top of it. We're doing the best we possibly can. And we just, we're just really glad that we got to explain what really is going on. But we just want to say we hear you.
So I, I did say that we would open up to the floor, any questions? And I'll just kind of do them one at a time. I just saw your hand. So please just come up to the microphone and just say your name and address for the record. This is for Mascaro and Trash. And then I will get to the public comment or the other agenda items when we're done. But we're all here, and I think this is a good opportunity.
Is the mic on? Hi, I'm Carolyn Blacknell.
Is the microphone on? Is that on?
Carolyn Blacknell, 15 McFarland Avenue. I want to say thank you so much, and thank you to all your trash collectors for all they do, because the vast majority in this whole community would never get on their trash truck and pick up trash of other someone else. The problem, if you want the problem fixed, call Harrisburg. Please do not extend the $300 for unemployment. The problem you addressed, you're addressing a problem to him that's created by our government in the state of Pennsylvania. If you go to Florida or another state, they don't pay $572 a week for unemployment. Other states pay significantly less. Do you guys know all that? Have you guys looked up how much unemployment that people are getting? Do you understand if someone's gonna ask you to stay home and do nothing, or get on a trash truck and drive around and pick up all this waste in the hot sun on the back of a truck? I mean, really, like, just, if you want the problem fixed, make sure that Labor Day, Governor Wolf ends this, because that's what's causing the problem. And you're, you're kind of beating up this company, then it's not their fault. Their fault was created by the pandemic or whatever, but every state's different. In other states, Tennessee, they don't have this kind of issue because they're not giving so much money. So yes, I do think the people are coming in to work because they're realizing in another month, they're not gonna be able to get the unemployment. And it's not their fault. I wouldn't, how do you blame someone for not coming into work? So I just hope that people as a community can be nicer and understand that these trashmen and trash women are collectors. We should really value them as humans for everything they do for us, because it's really important. The trash being picked up, as we've discovered, is wow, this is a really big thing in our everyday lives. And we should really respect what they do for our community. And thank you for listening. Again, call Harrisburg if you wanted to stop this problem, and you want to stop the phone calls, that'll stop the phone calls, if we can end the additional $300 and it doesn't get extended. So thank you very much.
Thanks for your comment. Anyone else? Hello, name and address for the record.
Arvin Cavalli, 90 Hope Road. Just, just so you know, I know, my comment's not insensitive, but I like to try to solve some problems other than so far giving excuses. And I've run a business for 20 years, and about 10 years ago, we invested a lot of money in, in training and technology in our, in our company. And at our, at our own cost, with no, with no return on investment. So everyone was just looking at us and saying, you're wasting time. But come March of 2020, we just turned that switch on, and we could do 10 people's job with five people, okay? And we never closed, not a single day. I'm in the healthcare industry. I was handed a, the largest department in the hospital two months before we were hit with COVID. We managed fully, fully functionally. So my question and my suggestion to you is, have you thought of new technology that can make your existing workers be more productive? As in neighboring states, there are trucks that actually haul trash by themselves. Second is, can you rent trucks that can have half trash and half recycling in the same, same route with the same people? So you can collect both at the same time and finish up faster? So there may be other technological solutions that you might not have looked at, and this might actually become a permanent solution for you guys, something to think about. Thank you.
Thanks. Did you want to comment or just take it as no interest? Thank you. Anyone else? Sure. Bye.
Joe Barkheimer, 361 Buck Road. Again, not related to the tax collector. Just some conflicting information I'm getting from you guys on the recycling issue. I, I have a container that says one through eight. Then I got a letter that said they could put potato chip bags in it, but then they rescinded that letter, and now that I got a letter that says, you take one for two. With that, what's the deal with the recycling?
We still, we still take one through eight, and we have a recycling center, second to none, up in Berksburg, Pennsylvania. I'm not, see, I don't want to answer the question about the potato chip bags. Yes, we can take potato chip bags, but I don't know if we're fully doing that in North, in, in the SWIP SWAC contract.
You're not.
No, we can't. We can't, because it, it goes to waste management. Doesn't go to us. It goes to waste management. So we, they can't. But now, I don't know, waste management should be taking one to eight. They might have backed off to just one to two because there's been a crisis in the recycling industry also. So they might have backed off to one to two. I don't know. I think the township would know more about that.
We, we dictate the types of materials that they collect. And just so everyone is clear, JP Mascaro only collects our material. They are not responsible for disposal. We, along with, at North Hampton, along with Upper and Lower Southampton, have separate contracts for recycling disposal, trash disposal, and yard waste disposal. And we do that, and we've done it successfully since, well, I guess since 1988 or '86, probably '86, because it helps keep the costs down. And that's proven true in our $299 a year trash fee. But they do not, they only dispose of material where we tell them to dispose it, and they are directed by our contract to take material to the facilities that we designate. So they collect. We specify numbers one through seven for recyclable materials. There's, there's a lot of residual waste we find in our recycling materials. Residual wastes are, are items that are not recyclable, that shouldn't be in there. I encourage everyone to make sure your recycling is clean, and that you don't throw things like Styrofoam in recyclables, plastic bags which clog up the recycling facility processing plant, they are a no-no. No plastic bags, they're not recyclable unless you take them to a specific facility or back to the grocery store. But that, to answer your question, it's one through seven.
One through seven, all right, and, and cardboard, I guess, as well.
Cardboard is definitely a number one.
And just one more quick question, I think is a fair question. I work in the industry that has CDL drivers, and we, we manage to keep our drivers, and I, I want to ask you, people are complaining about the unemployment stuff. What do you guys pay a CDL driver? Who, who, who would get a job with you? Because I, I know what my family pays.
You know, we're paying, we're probably, probably paying somewhere in the neighborhood of $20, $20 to $2 an hour. But it's, and, and again, I'm not, I'm not, I don't want to, but you're saying that you're keeping all your drivers where you work?
Most of them, yeah. And not in my, in my area.
I, I just know that the billboard industry and the advertising industry is making a, a fat, fat living off of, off of CDL, CDL advertisements. So I don't think we're the only, we're the only company that is having trouble with, with CDL drivers. That's a fact. So.
We pay them a competitive wage.
Yeah, very competitive.
Very competitive wage.
Thank you. Thanks for your, thanks for your comments. There's somebody over here. Hi.
Hello, my name is Tony Patty. I reside at 485 Middle Holland Road since August 1991, which makes next month my 30th anniversary of living in this township. Thank you very much. It's awesome. Previously, I had attended and spoke and supervised. Previously, I had attended and spoke at supervisor's meeting during 2016 because I had an interest in the proposed NOISE ordinance, which you passed. I want to offer a few thoughts about the situation with Mascaro with respect to missed yard waste pickups. I want to thank Adam, Eileen, Bob, and the township receptionist for promptly replying to my many emails on this subject. So yes, even on like a Sunday night or whatever, it's much appreciated. Also Lisa, who I spoke to before this meeting as well. I do wish there had been a bit more presumption of openness when I had made the written request to the supervisors to receive a copy of the Mascaro contract. Instead, I was advised to file the right to know Pennsylvania Title 65, which I did on Monday. Looking forward to receiving that in a few days. Thank you, Bob. In my opinion, and this is my main comment, for myself and my neighbors who I've spoken with, I realize in any business or any situation, things can go sideways. I think in, when that happens, what we have to do is to over-communicate, to set and manage expectations. And I feel that that has not occurred. I do believe that the township, through its excellent email list, could be communicating weekly with the residents to give status updates. I'm curious to know, you know, there was some brief mention, you know, 100 out of 150, things like that. Give me some statistics. Give me some scale, some scope to this. I am thrilled that the new Trash at Northampton email address is set up. I had suggested that in one of my emails. I did appreciate the year ago July 2020 letter from Pat Mascaro Senior, which I thought was well-written. I just wish there had been more such communications during this calendar year when things got bad for me and my neighbors. I generate a lot of yard waste. My backyard is a certified wildlife habitat. Yes, you get that from filling out some form on the internet. But if you've ever driven down Middle Holland Road between July 15th and October 15th, I am that guy with the hibiscus in my front yard, all 100-plus bushes with the dinner plate-sized flowers. Because yard work for me is a hobby and also my therapy from my technology work. So it's great to be outside. But I do pull an awful lot of weeds. As a point of constructive feedback, which I know is one of the goals of such a meeting, whoever thought Saturdays would help was wrong, at least for me. And basically, Saturday is the worst possible day, because if you work during the work week, it means you have to put the yard waste out on Friday night for Saturday pickup. And guess what? I'm doing my yard work on Saturday and Sunday. So anything I pick up on Sunday, at a minimum, is going to sit there for a week, roughly. And then unfortunately, we've had the week of missed pickups, which make it two weeks, and then the rain and the smell and everything like that. I truly hope that there will be consideration to going back to the day after, which for me was Tuesday, so I could do my yard work on Saturday and Sunday, put it out. And we talked about just a couple of days. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding Trash?
I have one other thing.
Okay.
Bob, go ahead. I beat you two gentlemen up pretty good the other, a little bit ago. But I just want to follow up by saying that I think I've worked with you for more than three decades. And I can honestly say that prior to COVID, you did provide us with excellent service. We had no more than a couple of dozen calls before COVID out of 13,000 households you collected. And that's a remarkable achievement. So I do think, you know, you've done a good job for us. Maybe you've sensed my frustration. I spend a good part of my day dealing with trash issues, and I, I shouldn't have to do that because I have plenty of other things to do. But I do want to thank you for coming. Mr. DiGennaro, when I called him, didn't even hesitate. He said, yes, we'll be here. And I do thank you both for coming tonight.
Okay, and one thing, we, isn't it so that we are not tipping drivers?
Yeah.
And we don't tip the trash? But.
They deserve it.
Wait, but.
We tip. We all have a problem.
Okay, we are not, you are not supposed to tip a driver. But what I have found, what I have found is a thank you with some water, some Gatorade. One morning, I went out to get coffee, and it was my trash day, and I thought, I'm getting them donuts. You know, things like that. I know that there are people that do find, you know, money monetarily tip them. And I have told the residents that I didn't think that was allowed under the contract, and I don't want your drivers to get in trouble. But I do want to tell you to please tell your drivers that the residents of Northampton Township do appreciate the hard work, especially the heat and humidity that we have had is unbearable. For me to go out, and especially when we had the ash in the air from the fires southwest, you know, people could barely breathe, and the guys were doing what they had to do. So please tell them that, you know, it's not all, we're blaming you, not them. No, I'm just, but, and, and just one other thing. Do you have any lady drivers? Any people working?
We have a few, we have a few women CDL drivers. I don't know that we have anybody on the backs of trucks.
Okay. Once she said that, I was thinking, oh, I don't think I've ever seen one. Okay.
Maybe, maybe I could just, just add, and what Eileen was talking about, there was some chatter out there that there seemed, some folks believed that they had been told that it was a requirement or that there was expected for tipping. And I think what Eileen, that's, that's what Eileen was talking about. So when we tell people that it is not an expectation, it's a personal choice. I know nobody's saying that you.
It's not one of the contracts.
No, no. But there was some word out there that somehow got spread and spread and spread that this, that it was an expectation. And it is not an expectation. And if, if, if someone chooses to give their folks a tip, it's the same as tipping the mailman or whatever.
Right.
Me personally, when I'm home and they come out, I always bring out ice water and cold water because they're working their tails off. And that's perfectly fine. It's a personal choice, that's all.
And in closing, I just want to say, you know, we're happy to have been here. We, we understand your frustration. And I can honestly look over you in the eye and tell you that I've been with this company 30 years. It's a strong, capable company, and I know we will weather the storm, and we appreciate your patience, because talk is cheap, but there will come a time where it will be like it was before. And Bob can do all your other things and not keep track of the misses.
All right. Thank you very much for coming. We appreciate you coming.
I'm going to leave.
Lisa, only, just Tony?
Can I please? Can I please?
A couple of comments, we're, we're, we're done.
You're allowed to tip unless you is an extra service. I called specifically the answer of the call.
I think I made it pretty clear that it is a personal choice, and that if anybody wants to do that.
I don't need my name to ask you to tip. I started, I said you're interested and you want to.
Thank you. It's, it's fine. Mr. Patty, you were signed up to talk on agenda items. Was that your time? Okay, so there's no other, there's none other than, right? Okay, thank you. We're going to move on. Thank you. We're going to move on to additional business. We'll start with consent items and approval of minutes. Frank?
If there are no objections, I request approval of the minutes of June 23rd, 2021.
Oh, shit, I forgot my glasses.
By unanimous consent. Charge.
Say it again with this, with this on, okay?
I could hear you.
I don't know if they could hear me up there. So if there are no objections, I request approval of the minutes of the board meeting of June 23rd, 2021 by unanimous consent.
Any objections? Okay, approved by unanimous consent. Thank you. Accounts payable. Kim?
Yes, I have the bills list for July 14th, 2021. Total all funds, $852,191.18. And I also have the bills list for July 28th, 2021, $1,201,523.79.
Any comment from the board? Otherwise, it's approved by consent? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to new business. And our first item is Barry, consider Department of Community and Economic Development grant application.
Sure, thanks, Adam. Bill, if I could ask you, put up the drawing. So what we're referring to tonight is the administration recommends that the township apply for a grant through the Pennsylvania Commonwealth Financing Authority from the Multi-Model Transportation Fund. Basically, it's money coming from the state, and it's for safety improvements along Route 332. And as the drawing up there illustrates, there's two projects that we're talking about. We're talking about on the installation of a rapid rectangular flashing beacon and pedestrian crossing at the Route 332 at Fur Drive. So where most residents realize where the Tyler Park entrance is, maybe we could highlight that, we're trying to make it easier for people walking from the other side of Tyler Park into Tyler Park. We want to put a crosswalk there for people. So we put together a design for that and we're applying for a state grant for that. The second one is going to be the installation of approximately 950 feet of a 10-foot-wide multipurpose trail along 332 from Rockway, Rockway near the high school, all the way down to St. Leonard's. And once again, we're trying to make it more walkable, so people can go that side of town over to Tyler Park. And then going from Tyler Park all the way down the, the steep hill there, and going underneath the bridge on 332 so you can enter Tyler Park. So what we're trying to do is give more access from the eastern part of town over to Tyler Park and have two entrances that'd be safer, safer for people to, you know, to walk or to cycle or, or what have you. We noticed a lot, especially with COVID-19, that a lot of parks are being utilized a lot more. But a lot of concerns people have about crossing 332, because there's no way of crossing that. Now, the grant that we're applying for, it's, it's a large dollar amount. So the grant is $934,000. It's 100% funded by the state of Pennsylvania. There's no matching by the township. It's a lot of money, but I think it's going to help out with the residents and make it a better place, more accessible to the Tyler Park. One of the positions that this board has taken in the past is that, you know, it's a lot of money we send to the state all the time through Harrisburgs or our taxes. And this board is always trying to get the money back. Because why not have the money spent in York or someplace else? Let's bring it back to Northampton Township. And I think here's two great examples where we can apply for a grant for two needed sections of town to make it safer, more walkable, and it's 100% funded by the state, which is good. So if I could, Adam, if I could read a motion?
Please.
So I move to adopt resolution R-21-19, authorizing the township manager to file a grant application with the Pennsylvania Commonwealth Financing Authority for, from the Multi-Model Transportation Fund, the MTF, for pedestrian safety improvements along Route 332 at Fur Drive and at St. Leonard's Road to include connections to Tyler Park and installation of a 950-foot multipath and trail signal with pedestrian accommodations, and to execute, execute all documents required by the grant program.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Anything to add, Barry?
No, the only thing I'm saying is that, you know, the township is working very hard to make the town more walkable, safer. Just tonight, I was walking, I was driving through town through Richborough, and I saw about six kids riding bicycles on the, right in front of the old Wawa, in front of the gasoline station, such that there's no sidewalks there whatsoever, and they're bouncing over the sidewalks and that. We have a grant that we got from the state, so we're going to put all, you know, sidewalks of downtown Richborough. This will also give an excellent opportunity for young youth and, you know, all people of all ages to be accessed parts of town and get into Tyler Park for riding or running or jogging, things like that. So, you know, I fully support this program.
Thanks. Who was the second? Kim, were you the second?
Eileen.
Eileen?
One thing I don't know if everyone heard when he read the motion, that this grant will also be for an installation of a traffic signal and a pedestrian crosswalk at 332 and St. Leonard's. That is a dangerous area to come out of St. Leonard's onto 332. And with the turn, you don't see it. And that was one thing that we were adding to this grant. So I just wanted people, because it was, you know, I don't know if everybody had heard when it was going through with the motion, but that's all I want to say.
Thanks. Kim?
I just want to say that I think this is a great idea, and I love money from the government that come to Northampton.
I agree. Frank?
You know, one of the, one of the pieces of this is basically a trail to nowhere that goes under the, you know, under, under the, the, under the bridge, you know, over the creek by, by the playhouse. That was put in, that was put in when that bridge was redone. So, but, but it doesn't go anywhere. And I think that the, what we get out of this grant is the ability to access that and then get into the park that way, which I think is excellent.
Yeah, that, that, that will bring you up to the fisherman's lot, so you can walk down and then under the bridge, and then come up to the fisherman's lot in, in the Tyler Park. I'm very much in favor of this. I agree with Kim. I, I like to see, you know, dollars that are available for these kind of projects come back to Northampton, and especially when there's no match, no matching requirement. So that's, this is.
Just so we're clear, this application is for the signal and the piece from the high school down to, down, partway down Newtown-Richborough Road. And then in the fall, I will be asking you to apply for another grant to do the other piece, which runs down the hill and under the bridge. Oh, okay. There's another grant program that is more suitable to that. And this program wasn't as suitable for that piece.
We're going to get to Tyler Park.
We're going to get to Tyler Park. That's my point. But I, I didn't want you to say, in the fall, why are we doing this? We just did it in, in July.
So we'll be able to access Tyler Park right through the main trail entrance?
Yes. Down that.
At Fur Drive, you will be.
At Fur Drive, yes.
And then eventually down by the playhouse and go under the bridge.
Correct.
I mean, trying to cross Route 332 at any time of day or night is impossible. And having a crosswalk there is going to be a lot safer for everybody. So.
You're really getting to two different neighborhoods.
Right.
With the two different trail systems.
It's connectivity.
Yeah.
All in favor? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Next, consider resolution authorizing destruction of documents. Kim?
Yes. The township administration periodically reviews its paper files and completes an inventory of the files that can be discarded in accordance with the township's record retention policy that is aligned with the state law. The disposition of records meeting the minimum retention period requires the Board of Supervisors to approve a resolution listing the type and date and ranges for the records in question. These records that, first of all, we follow this manual, that's about 100, at least 150 pages. And I do want to thank Lisa Russo. She has gone through all this. And some of the, like our accounts payable, accounts receivable, paper copies from 1998 to 2013, seasonal employee timesheets and records from 2008 to 2013, Parks and Rec Department receipt books, refund documents, program and camp registrations from 2010 to 2017. And like I said, we follow, we follow what the state tells us to do. Like accounts receivable, files and ledgers have, we have to retain for seven years. Or canceled checks, we have to retain for seven years. So, and I have to say, it is quite, we have quite a lot of stuff. Mr. Pellegrino gave me a tour of the crypt today. Oh, I mean, the basement.
Was there wine down there?
No, there's not anything.
No wine?
There's nothing. But it was an amazing amount of files and stuff. And so we are being proactive and getting, getting rid of what we legally can. And like I said, thank you to Lisa for going through all that, all that stuff. So with that, if I could make a motion?
Please.
I move to adopt resolution R-21-20, authorizing the destruction of certain township records meeting the minimum retention requirements of the Pennsylvania Municipal Records Act.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion, a second? Any discussion? Anything further? Kim? Barry?
Not at all.
Eileen? Frank?
Good.
None for me? All in favor, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Mind if I say something?
Oh, please.
I'm really talking tonight. I know. Well, you don't let me talk usually. Just as a follow-up to the disposition of records or disposal of records, just so everyone understands, we, we have a lot of old records that are in our basement, which was referred to as the crypt. And as, as the paper records are able to be disposed of, we are getting rid of them. We do now, for the most part, keep every record electronically, and we have those records in our systems and cloud-protected. So anything going forward, we don't get canceled checks anymore, as you all know. So going forward, and for many years now, we've been almost paperless. And, you know, for the environment's purposes and for our own efficiencies, I'm very happy to report that. But I just wanted everybody to know, we're not keeping vast amounts of paper records anymore. It's, it's almost all virtual.
Thanks, Bob. Next on our agenda is consider bid awards for gasoline, diesel, and number-two heating oil. Frank?
On behalf of the Bucks County Consortium, Upper Southampton Township advertised in a Bucks County Courier-Times for bids to purchase unleaded regular gasoline, on-road low, ultra-low sulfur diesel fuel, and number-two heating oil for the contract period August 1st, 2021 to July 31st, 2022. A copy of the proof of advertisement has also been provided to the township. Bids were solicited for quantities 6,000 gallons and above, and separately for quantities of 5,999 gallons or less. The price we will pay for these products is determined by the published price at the dock on the date of order plus a fixed price per gallon delivery fee. Based on the bid results, the Director of Public Works has recommended contract awards to Papco Inc., Ashton, PA, the low bidder for all of the products that I've just previously described. The price for the products, 5,999 gallons or less, are unleaded regular gasoline, again at the market price on the date of order, plus .1813 cents per gallon delivery fee. On-road ultra-sulfur fuel, ultra, yeah, ultra-low sulfur diesel fuel at the market price on the date of order plus .2307 cents per gallon delivery fee. Number-two heating oil, market price on the date of order plus .2523 cents per gallon delivery fee. The price for products for 6,000 gallons and over are unleaded gasoline at the market price on the date of order minus .0175 cents per gallon delivery, and on-road ultra-low sulfur diesel fuel at market price on the date of order plus .0209 cents per gallon delivery fee. May I make a motion?
Please.
Yeah, after that, yeah.
And you're going to just repeat it now, right?
No, actually, I, I'm not going to repeat it. I rewrote it. I figured saying it twice was enough, you know? I move to, I move to award contracts to Papco Inc., Ashton, PA, for unleaded regular gasoline, on-road ultra-low sulfur diesel fuel, and number-two heating oil for the contract period August 1st, 2021 to July 31st, 2022 at the bid prices quoted to the Bucks County Consortium.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
You have a motion, a second? Any further discussion, Frank?
No.
Kim?
Nope.
Eileen?
Nope.
Barry? None for me, thanks. All in favor, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? A motion carries. Thank you. And last, we, exciting, we have appointments to the library board. Eileen?
There are three vacancies on the library board, and I would like to thank Eileen Scheinson and Michael Russo and Diana Turek Gever for their time on the board. All three had other commitments to do, and they, that's why we have these three vacancies at once. And if I may make the motions to fill these vacancies, Chairman?
Please.
I move to appoint Charlene DiSarlo to the library board to fill a term effective immediately and expiring on December 31st, 2023. I move to appoint Janet Breaker to the library board to fill an unexpired term effective immediately and expiring on December 31st, 2022. I move to appoint Marcy Lyons DeCamillo to the library board to fill an unexpired term effective immediately and expiring on December 31st, 2021.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? Anything further, Eileen?
No, it was just wonderful interviews. We saw three excellent candidates, and those three ladies that are going to be on the board will be an asset to our board.
I concur with that, and I had the opportunity of being the liaison for the library for a number of years and working with the library board to try and do what we could to also support all the activities of the library. The library just goes far beyond just being a place to get books, and I think that they will have, they have a plan that they're going to put together to even make it better. So, and all three of those candidates were extremely strong, and I think it'll be, it'll help move us forward with that, with those activities.
Thanks, Frank. Kim?
I also was at the interviews, and I thought there were three excellent candidates.
Barry?
No, it's all good.
And I agree with the interviews as well. It was, it was a great session. All in favor, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion's carried. Thank you. We'll move into liaison reports, and we'll start with Kim.
Yes, first, I'm going to start with the seniors center. The seniors are thrilled to be back in the center and participating in almost all of their favorite activities. The atmosphere of the center is upbeat, positive, and as awesome as it has always been. A special center members-only event is planned for Wednesday, August 11th, at 10:00 a.m. A canine circus presented by Angel on a Leash Therapy Dog Program will perform a fun and entertaining show for the members and their families under the pavilion. Tickets for the event are $4 each. Seating is limit, is limited. It promises to be a possum day. Speaking of members, there has been an influx of seniors joining the center. Membership is only $25 per year for anyone age 55 or better. There are great benefits to becoming a member. The opportunities are endless for socialization, participation in activities, educational programs, and day trips. The center provides a wonderful support system to keep you active, vital, independent, and help maintain your general well-being. Stop by the center for a tour Monday through Friday, 9:00 to 3:30, or call 215-357-8199 for more information. And now to Parks and Rec. The summer is in full swing, and Park and Rec is hitting a grand slam with all there is being offered. It's been reported that all our campers are having a great time. However, if you're, you still need something for your children to do, it's not too late to sign up for the week-long camp. Specialty camps are offered throughout the summer, up until the last week in August. These camps differ from the camps we offer for six, seven, and eight weeks. Having a variety of camps, art, basketball, chess, cooking, robotics, science, tennis, and TV hosting and anchoring. How cool is that? If you're looking for a great way for your child to spend a week doing what they love, visit the Park and Rec website at www.northamptonrec.com, or call the office at 215-357-6800, extension 249 for assistance. Another great summer tradition is here in Northampton is our Thursday night summer concerts. Enjoy a variety of free outdoor concerts at the amphitheater on Thursday evenings through August 12th. Join us tomorrow, July 29th, for the mix with their blend of music from the '60s through the '80s. Come early to enjoy a showcase of classic and vintage cars that will line the walkway to the concert, courtesy of Ed Ingle and local car owners, except if it rains. And there might be, if there's rain, you will see that they change it up into, up into Morey's Wells School. So, and then I think the cars will be the next week. But this concert series is really good. Last week was a great concert. There was more than 500 people there, and it, they just did a fabulous job. So please take advantage of our free concerts. Let's see, and then after summer fun, we know that school is just around the corner. Northampton's preschool potpourri program, which starts right after Labor Day, still has openings. So give a call if your child is, must be potty-trained in order to enroll. But the one thing I really want to talk about, the last thing for Parks and Rec, is there is a part-time lead preschool and assistant teacher position opening. Northampton Township Preschool Potpourri is looking for a qualified lead preschool teacher and assistant teacher to join our team. The selected candidates must have a great love and patience for children. Please, for more detailed information, visit www.northamptonrec.com. But this is a great, a great job opportunity, so if you know anybody or you're interested yourself, please get in touch with us. And, and one more thing about Parks and Rec, I just want to say is, you know, if you're still looking for something to entertain your kids, we have lots of discounted tickets for the Adventure Aquarium in Camden, Baltimore Aquarium, Maurice Pier, Splash Zone in Wildwood, Six Flags Great Adventure, Sesame Place, and the Crayola Factory in Exton. Call the office for details. So take advantage of our discounted tickets, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Kim.
You're welcome.
Frank? Public Works started street milling this past Monday and will be starting paving on Monday, August 2nd, on those roads designated for paving in our budget this year. So you may see, you'll see some of that activity going on in those roads, in various areas of the township. The municipal authority that operates our water and sewer systems will be soliciting bids to do sewer system upgrade work in the Southampton Basin area. The Southampton Basin area is an older section of the township, and it runs roughly from Bristol Road to New Road and from Bustleton Pike to Frog Hollow Road. Actually, some of those sewer lines were put in probably in the 1960s, before the municipal authority was even established, and one of the first things the township did. We expect that the result of the work done there to actually reduce our cost for what we have to pay for, you know, for delivering sewage from our township down to Philadelphia, where it's treated. That'll be a big help. It's a big, it's a big project. That project's probably going to come in a million and a half, somewhere around there, but that money will be returned to us by the efficiency of the system. They're also going to be doing the same kind of work in what they refer to as the PR1 Basin, and basically that just covers the older section of Holland, and it's the same thing exactly what they're doing. They're not ripping up and replacing pipes. It's actually a lining system that goes into the pipes, and it seals all the leaks and makes the system work a lot better. The Veterans Advisory Commission, Veterans Advisory Board is, is doing some initial planning for the township's Veterans Day Ceremony that'll be held on November 11th. That's all I have.
Thank you, Frank. Barry?
Yeah, I just have a few things. So in, on August 9th, the zoning hearing board will be meeting in person, and that the, there's a property that is 960, 966, and 970, Second Street Pike. So this is a property that's between the McDonald's and TruMark in town in Richborough. That's going before the zoning hearing board, and there's going to be some variances requested. So I want to bring that to people's attention. There's a proposal to have two restaurants put there, Dunkin' Donuts and Chipoty, I guess is?
Chipotle.
Chipotle, okay. Chipotle. So, I'm sorry. So that's going to be at the August 9th. I guess I don't get out much. I spent too much time at Four Seasons, who knows?
You don't go to fast food, is what it is.
The Planning Commission meeting in July was canceled. The next meeting's going to be on Tuesday, August 10th. Some of the projects happening there is on, on Second Street Pike, 840 Second Street Pike, which is that old residential building with the warehouse in the back of it, it's been, you know, run down. There's a proposal to renovate that building. There's also land development in the industrial park for Blair Corporation. And there's also an addition in Holland for the PNC Building on Buck Road for medical office. And then the other item on the agenda for the Planning Commission is going to be the Advent Church subdivision on Worthington Mill Road. There's two houses being proposed on Worthington Mill Road right behind the Advent Church. That's ongoing at the Planning Commission on August 10th. The other things that are happening in town, which have been approved, the townhouses at Spring Mill Country Club have continued construction, that's, you know, moving very fast. The Waverly subdivision on East Holland Road, they had the first house being, being built there. I've been told that about a half a dozen houses have been sold already on that. Most people, I'm sure, saw in town where the, the giant facility's been, the old Murray's Food Store has been torn down now, and the giant that was approved by this board several months ago, that's moving along. I think it's proposed to open sometime in early 2022, that brand-new giant there. And then there's another small subdivision on East Holland Road that's been, started work. And then I'm sure a lot of people also saw on Stony Ford, there's been a lot of land cleared there near the Bill Shires, and there's a lot more housing being built there. So residential housing in Northampton Township has been very active. One of the things that's happening in Holland is the Mill Race Inn property. There's redevelopment of that site, and that's going to be, consist of condos and office use for the existing Mill Race building. There's been a lot of effort in trying to get that building renovated and rehabbed, and I think we're very closely getting that done. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Eileen?
Just, I wanted to ask Barry, with the Stony Ford houses?
Yes.
Have you received any residents' questions about that? I know that you live right near there also. Have you? I have, and I just wanted people to know that, I had spoken to Amanda earlier, that was before the board. That had to go to the Planning Commission, to the Bucks County Planning Commission. I don't think they went to zoning.
They did.
But, they did. So they even had to go to zoning before it came to us for approval of land development, and that happened in April. And yes, some residents, you are correct, we had to do it on Zoom meetings, but we had to go forward. We have to go forward with everything. So I want you all to understand that it was not done behind anybody's back. It was not done without the transparency of all the meetings, so please understand that. Because I had a few emails and I had a few not-nice comments about how we did this behind people's backs, and we did not. It was right out there with all the meetings. So that's what I wanted to say about that. Secondly, I think you all noticed that we're wearing our summer outfits. Usually we are dressed, the men are in their suits and ties, and, and we are not dressed like this usually, but our chairman wanted us to feel the summertime, so we are in our summer outfits. But I do want to tell everyone that this is the first time since 2007 that Mr. Pellegrino has not been wearing a suit and tie to our supervisors' meeting. So thank you, sir, for going along with our summer outfits this year.
It was a struggle.
Do you think I could just follow up on that? So on, on Stony Ford Road, there was initially a proposal for, and I'm sure a lot of people may have seen it, on Stony Ford Road, just past Buck Road, all that land's been cleared out there, and it's the side of a hill. Originally, it was proposed to have high-density housing there, and there's some restrictions and variances that were requested. I think the builder there, Mr. Tony, decided not to proceed with that and actually built single-family homes there, which I think will be a less density and is going to be a better use of that property. So there's going to be, uh, single-family homes built on that. Mr. Tony's the same developer that, you put houses on St. Leonard's. There's a small cul-de-sac that was built there, so. And that was, that went through all the zoning, planning, everything else, too.
Okay. Just wanted to make that. Okay. One, I would like to thank Mr. O'Donnell for giving me the opportunity to be the liaison to the library. Being that this is my last year as a supervisor, I wanted to work as a liaison with a board of residents, and I am very, very pleased to be working with those people. The library board is made up of residents who volunteer to oversee our library operations. As you heard, we have three new members to join. Eleonora Russo, our chairperson, Michael May, Charles Beam, and Russell Eleonora Russo, our chairperson, Michael May, Charles Beam, and Russell Heim, did I say it right? Heim, excuse me. With many COVID regulations ending, our library board is working to go forward with a new vision. They are looking to evolve the library experience and engage our community in new ways. The supervisors and administration are looking forward to working with the library board and the library staff to achieve these new endeavors. The library board and staff are planning our first in-person party. They are having a 50-plus-one birthday party. And I just, I wrote everything down but the date. I think it's the second Sunday in September. And it is going to have kids' activities, face painting, arts and crafts, and of course, birthday cake. Each child, instead of giving a present to the library, we are giving a present to every child that attends. Also, I'm pleased to be one of the people on the committee for the 300th anniversary. You all know that, hopefully, that December the 14th, 2022, will be Northampton Township's 300th birthday. We have so many activities planned for next year. It is so exciting. Throughout the summer, there will be activities, next summer of 2022, there will be activities through the library, the senior center, and our Park and Rec, about 300. October, no, August, sorry, we're going to have our concerts that are going to be talking about our 300 promotions and a Taste of Northampton, where our restaurants in the area are going to be talking about and hopefully serving some foods from the 1700s. So we all are going to be able to see how people live then. In September, we are going to be going to different areas in the township to have activities about our past and our history. In October, we have our October 14th, we're having a gala at Northampton Valley Country Club. And we are working with the school district to have a curriculum for the children about Northampton Township history. In November, oh, and in October, we, wait, I'm getting messed up here. In September, we are also, this is very exciting to me, is we are going to be having a weekend, September 24th and September 25th, a full weekend of things to do. On Saturday, we're going to have classes, talking about our history. Saturday night, we're going to have a party at our civic center. And on Sunday, we are going to have our festival, which we all know as Northampton Day. And all of that activity is going to be at Council Rock South. We are going, because we can't use the middle school anymore, so our Northampton Day festivities will be over there. We will end our year at our supervisors' meeting on December the 14th with a proclamation, and of course, birthday cakes and birthday cake and other things for everyone that attends. It should be fun. We are trying to see about all different activities, they're still looking. We're seeing if it's possible to have fireworks. We're seeing if it's possible, it's going to be exciting. Keep looking. Keep going on to your emails. We have a website. It's going to be an amazing year celebrating our community. And, and that is it. And I, thank you. I'm very excited about this 300. I'm sorry, I'm...
Thanks for all the hard work with the committee. It's really coming along well.
Thank you.
Just, I'll start out. Eileen talked about the library. And I do get anonymous letters every now and again in the mail. And I got one recently, and it's very nice, and I thought I would just share it. It says, "Thank you." It's, I don't know who it's from. And it says, "Northampton Township Library is the best. Over the past year, the children's librarians have gone above and beyond to create meaningful activities for all ages. A big thank you." So I don't know who sent that, but thank you for calling that out. Our library is the best. It's a phenomenal place. And I think one of the things we realized during our interviews for the library board is, everybody, everybody is astonished how much goes on down there, and we really need to just get the word out better. And I think that the library board is really going to tackle how we do a better job of advertising and marketing some of the things, because there are really great programs there. So I thought I would share that. Couple of things from the fire department. This is just a safety message for the community. If you have a carbon monoxide detector, check the date on the back. They do expire. They usually last between five and seven years. So take a look on the back, and if it is expired, please replace it. They're critical. If you don't have a carbon monoxide detector, you probably should, especially if you have any fossil fuel, any fuel oil, propane, natural gas, fireplace, anything that burns in your house, you should have a carbon monoxide detector. And the reason I bring it up tonight is, we, we still have incidents, and we recently had one that was so close to being just a tragedy. It wasn't because of a carbon monoxide detector, but it easily could have been had that detector not worked. It was frightening. So please, take the time to check your carbon monoxide detector and make sure it's current. A couple of other announcements. This is the 20th anniversary of 9/11 this year, and the township will be doing a ceremony on 9/11, which is a Saturday. Most likely, it will be held outdoors at the police station, and there's more information to come on that. It'll be very similar in format to the way we do Memorial Day and Flag Day. So we look forward to having some speakers there and just remembering that day for the first responders of our community. Today, Eileen and I were fortunate enough to welcome home the, I got to pull this up on my phone to make sure I write, the Northampton Bombers Legion team, prep 13- to 14-year-olds that won the Pennsylvania State Championship, baseball championship today. They won it in Downingtown today. There they are. And we were able to, I know somebody in the fire department, we were able to get together the fire department and our EMS folks, and we brought them home in style. With the fire trucks and some red lights and sirens, that's pictures up at the civic center. So congratulations to them. And I'll just say that the managers, the manager of the team is Jeff Claus, coached by Nick Fisher, Larry Lance, Jeff Davis, and Bill O'Neill. This team won 32 out of 35 games for their season. They won the lower Bucks County Legion District Championship, which brought them to the state championship, which was all week. It's an elimination tour, a tournament, and they won today. So congratulations to them. And maybe we'll see them again next, next month, if we can have them come for a visit. And this is for me. So the township is going to run a food drive this year. There's going to be collection bins all over the township at some of the facilities. And it is going to kick off at the Richborough Fire Station on Sunday, August 1st, from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. So please drop off your donations and, of course, meet the firefighters, because they'll be there. And this, this is for the benefit of the food pantry at Bethana in Southampton. And we've had very good success in the past, especially with the township departments hosting and doing a food drive. I know the police have, in some years, just hit it out of the park with some enormous amounts of food. And I think we all probably agree that no one should go hungry. So...
And one thing is, everybody thinks that in the wintertime and when it's cold, that that's when people are hungry. They're hungry all year round.
And they need food all year long.
And so anybody that can do that, thank you for announcing that.
So that's all I have for tonight. Managers' report.
Nothing further to report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We have Mr. Paizo, Joe Paizo is with us on Zoom. And just give us a second, and I think we're going to bring him up, and we'll have the solicitors report. And there he is. Hello, Joe.
Good evening. This is my first Northampton supervisors' meeting ever without a suit and tie. But greetings from my family vacation, my, my family sharing me with you for a few hours tonight. The minute should reflect that the board met in executive session on three occasions since our last supervisors' meeting. First time was on July 7. Present for that executive session were four members of the Board of Supervisors. Mr. Moore could not be present for that. The township manager and me. During that executive session, one matter of pending litigation and one matter of potential litigation were discussed. No official action was taken at that executive session, and no official action was required this evening as a result of that executive session. Second executive session took place on July 21. Two matters of pending litigation were discussed, and one matter of potential litigation were discussed. Present for that executive session were the members of the Board of Supervisors, the township manager, the assistant township manager, the township engineer, and me. Again, no official action was taken during that executive session, and no official action was required this evening as a result. I should note that both of those executive sessions, July 7 and July 21, both of them were virtual. Finally, an executive session was held immediately prior to this evening's meeting. All of the members of the Board of Supervisors, the township manager, the assistant township manager, and the township engineer were present. I attended virtually, everyone else was there in person. One matter of pending litigation and one matter of potential litigation were discussed. Again, no official action was taken during that executive session, and none is required this evening as a result. Other than that, I look forward to seeing you all in person next week.
Thank you, Joe. And thank you for dressing down tonight for us. Amanda, the engineers' report?
There you go. I have nothing to report this evening, and that was a tough act to follow, anyway. Not quite as impressive as that.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move into a public comment now, and I guess the list is coming up. I'll meet you over here, so you don't have to... Okay, all the standard rules will apply. They'll be, try to please keep your comments to three minutes. I ask that, if you can, try not to be repetitive. Try to stick with, with your point. I will do the best I can, and I apologize in advance if I don't do well with somebody's name. And I'm going to stick to the list tonight. Is there anybody that did not get a chance to sign on to the list? Because we're just going to stick to this list tonight. And I'll go right down. Okay, thanks. So first is Eric Lehman. And just say your name and address for the record. Thanks, Eric.
Hi, Eric Lehman, 57 Schoolhouse Road. The Wawa does not belong in Holland. It's going to change the character of the area. We already have enough here, and my brother lives on Mill Creek Road, and he doesn't want it either. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Eric. Tom Bueker?
Thank you.
And your name and address for the record. Thanks.
Will do. I'm Tom Bueker. I live at 669 Holland Road, also known as State Road 2067. As most of us know, the proposed Super Wawa is planned for the Wright property that sits in a triangle formed by Roxville Road at the top, with Holland Road and Bucks Road forming the sides. I like to picture it as a funnel, which is an apt metaphor, because it is on a downhill slope where everything spilled onto the ground at the top will funnel its way down and south to the water table and the streams below. The plans available on the township website only show the top half of the funnel. The bottom half is Lot 2 and the current Shell Station. I have not seen public information that addresses this. The proposal leaves abandoned or does not address the Shell Station, the current Y intersection where Buck Road and Holland Road intersect, the existing Wawa store. I would think the township would not approve such a partial plan that leaves these unaddressed responsibilities to be dealt with later at someone else's expense. Regarding the current Y intersection at the south, does the new labyrinthine traffic pattern address the current Y intersection? Is it eliminated as part of this proposal? The plan as drawn does not address anything south of Lot 2. I'm thinking maybe the Y intersection gets replaced by the Z intersection, where northbound Holland Road traffic goes up Buck Road, a block further north, to the new traffic signal with a left-turn arrow, zig's left onto Roxville, then zags right onto Holland Road to continue on what had been a straight run. Can a plan be made available online that includes Lot 1, Lot 2, the current intersection, and the current Wawa? Speaking of the current Wawa, what happens to the current Wawa store? These former Wawa's become a second-class produce junction, a dollar store wannabe, and they detract from the area. Wawa Provco should have plans for the current store and its future use, and make the plans public as part of the proposal. Current Shell Station. Any plans to put in new gas pumps? To put new gas pumps in this area should include EPA-compliant removal and cleanup of the existing fuel tanks and gas station adjacent to the Wright property at the expense of the developers. Wawa and Provco should be responsible to purchase and restore this site according to EPA requirements. This should not be left to the taxpayers or a future developer. It's irresponsible and even possibly criminal, in my opinion, to build a new gas station immediately adjacent to an old one on virgin soil without responsibility for the old gas station, its underground tanks, their content, and the soil around them. The Shell Station will sit abandoned for years if not addressed within the proposed new station due to the required cleanup. Finally, there's been discussion recently recalling the fact that this is the fourth assault on this property by developers. A gas station, a Rite Aid, another gas station, and now Super Wawa. I think we could say it, a gas station. None of these proposals fit the Holland master plan. I would think that the zoning board would have rezoned the parcel after the first proposal, or the second, or the third. Why are we here again? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bueker. Charles Chack? And then Pam Duffy, you'll be up next. I'll try to put it on deck.
Charles Chack, 74 Lakeview Drive, Holland, PA. Holland, PA. I really liked your proposal. I liked the Rails-to-Trails proposal that you helped pass in this community. It's awesome. But it seems like Holland is like the forgotten stepchild. We're here from Holland. And nobody says anything about improving Holland. The approval of green space, as I heard you say, was buying the Gulf, the Northampton Country Club. That is not green space. That's a business. That's not green space. Now let me get to what I wanted to say. I just feel like Holland is forgotten. They're putting poisons in our community. What he said about that stream, this lady last week opened our eyes about concrete and how it pours, and how gasoline permeates concrete and macadam. You go down that hill, there's conservancy down there, nature conservancy, with a stream, which is going to be polluted. If you watched the news this week, there were, I don't know whether it was 40,000 or 4,000 gallons were dropped about four or five months ago by a delivery, a gas delivery driver, who didn't have the time and effort, he should be fired right away, and he dropped his gasoline off in back of the station. And now they said it's going to take 10 years to clean that up. Major fish kill, major pollution to the streams, major pollution in our neighborhoods in Holland. Doylestown, right? Doylestown, Mr. Pellegrino. Okay, let me go on. This is what I want to say. That Wright property is beautiful. A gas station's going to make it poisonous. My wife and I both worked the polls. A lot of you are elected officials. We worked the polls at Hillcrest. We've done that for the last few years. Now, there was a man running for supervisor. I was unaware of the whole situation, but he came up to me and he was giving out information. And he said he was totally against the Wawa. We talked for about an hour before the polls opened up. So he gave me his information because he couldn't be there the whole time. And he said, "Would you please solicit for me and ask the people how they feel about the Wawa coming into that area?" And I asked every person at Hillcrest, and you know this election. It was a massive turnout. So I talked to a lot of people. 100% of them were against the Wawa, against it. In one form or another, they were against it. And I was just amazed, 100%. And I'm talking about Democrats and Republicans, and I'm talking about bipartisanship. They were together on an issue. It made me feel so good. I was working for one... I was working for one party. I was there giving out information for both parties because I saw that was so vital. He was from not my party, but I gave out his information because it was effective and it was moral. I wanted to say that. The other issue was the dumping of that gasoline. That upset me greatly. We don't want to see that happen in our area. We dealt with a lot of issues. We dealt with the safety of the children. We dealt with the pollution that's going to come to our area. We dealt with the traffic patterns. Lot of other areas outside of our areas, supervisors are working to put restrictions on Wawa who is becoming so pervasive. They buy up any property. Provco comes in, they buy up the property, then they sell it to people that don't care about the community three or four years down the road when Wawa's out of the picture. It's all so corrupt and we got to stop it now. Local communities and local municipalities and supervisors are working to put restrictions. I don't feel you are. You guys are.
Thank you, Mr. Chack. Pam Duffy and then Jerry Duffy is on deck. And try to keep it to three minutes if you can, please.
Good evening, Supervisors. My name is Pam Duffy. I live at 125 Hope Road in Holland. Of course, I'm going to talk about the Holland Super Wawa. That's kind of what I do anymore sadly, 18 months of my life. I have been working on this. 18 months ago, February of 2020, nobody even knew about it. To date, we have 2,600 people have signed the petition and everybody knows about it. So guess what? Mission accomplished. I just want to say the Wright property is the gateway to Holland. It's the welcome. It's when people drive into Holland, that's what they're going to see. It's a beautiful property. And you guys did the overlay plan, which made that as the real gateway, as a welcome. It's going to be the welcome. Everybody's going to see that and now you're not following it. So if you put that, if you put that Wawa there, if you vote for that, I mean, Holland's going to become more dangerous, industrial, ugly. It'll change the whole feel of the whole area, not just for me, my children, for everybody. Somebody said to me, why don't you just move? Yeah, sure, I could move, but I love Holland. I love living there. I want my kids to live there. I want, I want it to be beautiful for generations to come. 58 years old, who knows how long I'm going to live there anymore? Or I might want, want to go to a retirement development, you know, the 55 and older stuff. I don't know. But I am required, we, my neighbors, we are required to try to stop this. And yeah, we know we're up, what we're up against and we have to try. Wawa is, and Chuck touched on this, Wawa is a tenant, Provco is the developer. Provco will develop that land and then they will put it up for sale worldwide to anybody who can pay about $8 million for it. Currently, the Wawa at Street and Bustleton Avenue is for sale for around $8 million. The other one, a mile down the road on Street Road, is also for sale. That's what Provco does. Anybody, some corporation, some rich person who lives on the other side of the world, they don't care about Northampton Township, they don't care about Holland, they don't care about you. You're nothing. You're nothing to them. You can't make them do anything. The current Wawa that is over there now, the legacy one, the man who owns that is a Holland resident. He owns that property in the Holland Shopping Center. He is the landlord. He lives in Holland. He's local. You could go to his house and ask him for something. How are you going to even find out who owns that property or make them do something, maybe somewhere across the world? You know, things go south. You know, the world's changing. The pandemic has showed us that. Things go south for Wawa. We don't know. The whole, the whole world is going, you know, for electric cars and stuff like that. We don't have a crystal ball, but if things go south for Wawa, Wawa just takes down their shingle, that's the end of it. And we're left with the cleanup. The mill race is at, you mentioned that the mill race was going to be condos, office space, whatever. It's 21 years. I've lived, 21 years ago is when that mill race was destroyed. I mean, really? I still don't see anything happening over there. I'm hoping you're right and I'm hoping something happens this time. This time. This time, exactly. Same thing with Breezy Point. What's that, six or seven years? I don't know. I just want to make an analogy. I assume all you guys have had jobs, work jobs. I have a job, I have a boss. When my boss gives me a project to do, I'm expected to do it. And usually it's not a project and you just, I could just look at it, rubber stamp it or do something. It's something that I've got to do, I've got to look into, I've got to eliminate the roadblocks. That's why I was hired. That's what I'm required to do and I'm required to follow laws to do it. I can't go back to my boss and give him an excuse and say something like, oh, sorry, boss, I can't do it because I found this law from 1977. Does it sound familiar? 1977, that's the ordinance that you guys, the zoning hearing board, is following. The property, the data, 1954 is when that property was zoned, C2 commercial, which by the way is like commercial, not, not what the Wawa is. Next point, July 7th meeting.
Can you start to wrap up?
Okay, July 7th meeting was canceled by Provco. You could have challenged your zoning hearing board, which based the decision on 44-year ordinance, 67-year-old zoning. You chose not to support your people or listen to the recommendation of your own planning commissioners who voted unanimously against this Wawa. We, your people, had to hire our lawyer and take this to the Bucks County Court of Common Pleas. After we appealed it, you still did not declare party status. And I know that's a legal term, but basically it means party status. You're either going to support us, we, your people who elected you, or you're going to support Provco. So you're not stewards for the people. It looks to me like you're stewards for Provco. It's one or the other. Current Supervisors, you will be held accountable forever, linked to bringing about Holland's downfall because that's what this Super Wawa will do if you allow this gas station to be built, destroying our quality of life forever, every single day. You, Adam Selisker, Barry Moore, Kim Rose, Eileen Silver and Frank O'Donnell, you, that will be your legacy. And I promise personally that I will never let that die as long as I live here and I know I speak for many of my neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry, Jerry Duffy and then Shane Duffy is on deck.
Okay, good evening. Good evening, I'm Jerry Duffy, Pam's husband, 125 Hope Road. And I don't usually speak from notes, but there's some important things I wanted to communicate, specifically six points that I'd like to get through tonight. Ms. Silver, on social media, you often say, I wish we would get your facts straight. So tonight, here are the facts. Number one, Holland does not need a gas station. There are Super Wawas at Bustleton and Street Road 2.1 miles away, Street and Philmont 3.2 miles, Richborough 4.1. There are four other gas stations, a Feasterville Golf, a Trivo Sunoco, two Feasterville Sunocos, all within 2.6 miles of this proposed site. So let's dispense with the argument that Holland needs a gas station if the Shell closes. No one is going to run out of gas driving two miles. Number two, the road redesign is flawed and I tried to point this out the last time we had a meeting. Last week, I spoke with PennDOT's Bucks County District 6 engineer, Francis Haney, at length on how the proposed road redesign is flawed. Mr. Haney agreed that with only two exits out of the Wawa lot, traffic will back up on Roxville Road and he needed to extend the approach lanes to the proposed new light at Buck and Roxville. That's what he told me. He said PennDOT had not approved the permit yet for the proposed road redesign. Mr. Haney agreed with me, the drivers will use the Holland Road exit, as I said, and they will use Hope Road as a turnaround to go south because it is the first, first alternate that presents itself. When I said to Mr. Haney that trash trucks, delivery trucks sometimes block Hope Road and that drivers coming from the Wawa will then use Churchville Lane or Morning Glory Road to circle back, he did not disagree. This is a PennDOT official speaking. This increased traffic will flood into our neighborhoods and it will endanger Holland homeowners and their children. This is an undeniable fact. Number three, making Holland walkable, and you mentioned this tonight. Mr. Moore, you ran your election, reelection campaign on making Holland a walkable town. The charm of Holland is that it isn't walkable, which makes it different from Newtown, Richborough and Southampton. But the fact is it will never be walkable because of the topography. Buck and Holland Roads are far too dangerous for anyone to walk along them. Roxville will be too. Putting a Super Wawa in the middle of this area will make them even more dangerous. No one will walk to this Super Wawa. It will only bring drivers. That is a fact. Number four, noise at night. Some people scoff at our criticism of teens and young, young people hanging out in large groups in the Super Wawa parking lots. We often see it in Richborough. But there's a big difference between Richborough and this proposed site in Holland. The Richborough Super Wawa is surrounded by many other businesses. The kids can move from the Wawa parking lot to the Irish Horn Restaurant, the Dairy Queen, Backo, Dunkin' Donuts, any number of places. They can safely walk to any of these from the Wawa. They cannot do this in Holland at the proposed site. The only place they might walk to is Big Head's across dangerous Buck Road. All other businesses in the 295 Shopping Center will be closed at night. So the kids will remain in the Holland Super Wawa parking lot, unlike Richborough, where they'll disperse and they'll go elsewhere. One other important note, it's one thing for a group of young people to be gathered during the day. It's an entirely different thing at night. Our closest homeowners are 70 feet from this Super Wawa. They will hear the noise of young people talking, laughing, yelling at 10:00 PM, 11:00 PM, midnight. Ms. Rose, I ask you, would you feel comfortable hearing the noise of a group of people just outside your home at 11:00 PM, night after night? Would you, Ms. Silver? Would you, Mr. O'Donnell? I wouldn't. It's unnerving and it's unfair to these homeowners to subject them to that and that's a fact of what will happen. Number five, fear of a Provco.
Start to wrap up if you would.
I will, I will. Two more points. Fear of a Provco Wawa lawsuit. The elephant in the room is this. Northampton Township doesn't want to oppose the Wawa because Provco has a right to bid on a commercial property on C2 zone land and you fear a Provco lawsuit if you say no. But consider this, if one child is hurt by an impatient, angry driver coming from the Super Wawa and driving recklessly, or one new Holland driver such as my 16-year-old son is hit by one of these impatient drivers coming from the Super Wawa, the township could face a lawsuit that would dwarf any amount Provco could sue the township. And God forbid multiple children playing in these Holland streets or walking to school are injured by one of these Super Wawa drivers, Northampton Township might face a class action suit. Telling Provco to walk away now is a small price to pay. Fact. Last point, Super Wawa setting precedent. In the April zoning hearing board meeting, the Richborough Super Wawa was used as a precedent for building the proposed Holland Super Wawa. For many reasons, that was ludicrous because the circumstances of the two are so entirely different. But if you allow the Holland Super Wawa, it too will be used as a precedent to approve yet other Super Wawas in Northampton Township and we will continue down that slippery slope. Back in December, Mr. Palgrino, Mr. Selisker, you told us, the homeowners that met on Hope Road, to discuss this, that 5% of available land in Northampton Township is commercially zoned. What will stop Provco from eating up every bit of that land and falling back on the Super Wawas that you approve as precedent that allows them to continue doing it? Nothing. Provco is nothing more than a corporate bully. When does the madness stop? And finally, I just found this as a really appropriate metaphor. Many of you are about my age. There was a group that was very popular in the 70s and 80s, the Eagles. Well, there's a song by the Eagles called "The Last Resort" and it contains this line, "Some rich man came and raped the land. Nobody caught them, put up a bunch of ugly boxes." That's exactly what Provco is doing and if you approve this, you are just as complicit. This will be your legacy. Do the right thing, vote no.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. And on deck is Brett Duffy.
All right. Good evening. My name is Shane Duffy. I'll talk tonight about some of my thoughts.
What's your address?
125 Hope Road.
Thank you.
So you've all heard a lot from my parents. They've been instrumental in getting the news out to my community about this and they've certainly dived into the specifics. And although I'm not nearly as invested as they are, I would like to talk about some of my thoughts on it and especially what I've gleaned from hearing them. I remember talking to my brother Brett and I, I think this is a smaller point, but just as relevant, I was curious, the politics of the members on the supervisor panel because I think that it's good to understand the reasoning of the people in charge of who's pushing these motions through. And I was interested to learn and he told me that a plurality are Republicans. And I myself am a conservative Republican and I can see that a lot of us are often stereotyped as being about business or economic development, often at the cost or expensive communities. And I think that has an unfair assertion in the way that part of being conservative, I think that a lot of people overlook and often in the case of conservatives and why they're so easily stereotyped is what it truly means to be one. To be a conservative is to be one to who conserves his community. And in that sense, it's not just about economic development, but how these changes will be brought about and at what rate, rate change should be instituted in a community and what effects it'll have and in a honest manner. And the way that I saw the Wawa developed and how my parents found out about it purely through word of mouth from their neighbors who were notified after the fact and one was on vacation at the time. And then the fact of the matter that there'll be 16 gas pumps, how it will tremendously affect our community with driving, how people access the sites while get to work each morning. The way in which it was brought about didn't strike me, and I mean this in the literal sense of the word, as a conservative or liberal development, but as an insane development. Overnight, overnight, the area will be totally changed in a way that'll be irreversible for generations and I, and not even to the fault of supervisors or people on Wawa or Provco. I think that they don't take into account how this will affect the community, the way the business is done, the way that people go to school and go to work and even the way people gather. And in the case of my parents, my brother both mentioned people meeting in the parking lots. I was in Richborough last Thursday night and in the lot of the Dunkin' Donuts and the supermarket, there was about 120 kids going back and forth between the Wawa and that spot. And it was walkable to that extent, but, and I think this is also a result of the pandemic, but who's to say that won't happen in our spot as well as with Buck Road because with the Big Heads there, it's going to incentivize that going back and forth. So I ask that those who do have that conservative leaning and even moderates, the, the changes that we'll be seeing will have great effects on the community and I think that those should be taken to effect and then taken to account in an effective manner. Because change can be a powerful force and in the case of land development, especially one this large, at best, it'll be disorienting to us in the community and at worst disastrous. Thank you.
Thank you. Brett Duffy and then. Carolyn Blackburn, maybe? Carolyn here? Okay.
Okay, am I close enough to the microphone? I hope.
Name and address.
Name and address for the record, thanks.
Sure. It's, my name is Brett Duffy, 125 Hope Road. I just, first, I want to thank the people that came here today and you may be noticing that many of them, like last meeting, are wearing green and that's because that's the essence of what we're trying to preserve in Holland, green and green space. So that's, that's why that is. And I also want to welcome everyone to the second round of holding our local government accountable on this issue. After the June 23rd meeting, my mom and I drove to the Richborough Super Wawa because I expressed views that many kids, as, as said, loitered in that parking lot. And what, what'd you think I saw? I saw 15 kids, no less, in that parking lot loitering. Now, I've heard criticism of myself that said, oh, well, they're, they're just kids minding their own business. It's not an issue. Well, to that I say, well, I saw kids smoking god knows what, the drag racing. I saw it with my own eyes. And this is, this stuff goes on every night. I see it. I go to that Wawa, I drive to that Wawa, my parents drive to that Wawa, I see it. And that's exactly what's going to happen in Holland, as mentioned, if this plan is approved. And also on June 23rd, I asked a question directed at the chairman or any other supervisor that wanted to answer. And I again asked that question. You declined to answer last time. The question is, do you believe this, the location, this proposed Super Wawa is appropriate considering it's only 70 feet from houses? Yes or no?
I told you last time, we're going to be hearing the, the Wawa application when it comes and this is public comment.
So be it. It's very telling, I think, that two meetings in a row, remember, this is a supervisor meeting, a public meeting, I'm asking a public question. He refuses to answer both times. I said, any other supervisor can answer, they refuse to answer both times. Remember that, your constituents are watching.
Mr. Moore, could I interject for a moment, please?
Sure.
Mr. Paizo, is that you? Hang on one second.
Hope this is not being charged with my time.
We won't charge this to your time. Go ahead, Joe.
I just want to make it clear to the public, and I wanted to do it at the last meeting as well. The Provco Wawa application was not on last month's regular agenda of the Board of Supervisors. It is not on tonight's regular agenda of the Board of Supervisors. It is, however, a pending land development application within this township. It would be imprudent and improper for the Board of Supervisors to, at this time, express any opinion regarding that application while it is still pending within this township and not formally in front of them with the applicant present. If you want to assure this community that a Wawa will be there, continue to ask the Supervisors to comment tonight or at any other time when we're not.
Yeah, that's a bunch of crap, sorry. A bunch of crap.
Excuse me. Let, let, let Mr. Paizo finish, please. Let Mr. Paizo finish, and he will get his time. He will get his time.
I'm not bullied, screw him.
Okay.
Should I continue?
I, I think you turned your microphone off. We won't charge us to your time, Brett.
Thank you.
Please understand that a land development application in this township and in this Commonwealth is entitled to have its, its application heard without it being prejudged by the Board of Supervisors.
Okay. Thanks, Joe. Okay, I think we're, we're good.
Goodbye, Joe, see ya.
No, no. Please, adjust the board, please stick to your subject.
Sure. So the, so I think, I can't be said enough that 16 gas pumps, 70 feet from houses, I mean, that's been a talking point, but I mean, 16 gas pumps, 70 feet from houses, shouldn't people be concerned about that? That, you know, we're just going to, if we approve this here, maybe next, next project that Provco wants to build will be 16 gas pumps, 50 feet from houses, then 30 feet from houses. Maybe the next project will be in my front yard, who knows? That's, that's what we're trending with this, with these kind of ridiculous land developments if while, if Provco is allowed to build a 16 gas pump, gas station, 70 feet from homes. And I also want to say that just about 2,600 people have signed the Stop Wawa petition. I mean, that's a large chunk of Holland and a large chunk of the township. That could swing some of your reelection campaigns. Think about that. I know it was mentioned that the Planning Commission voted seven, seven to zero, unanimous, against this, against this proposal, and even though, I know, I realize that the Planning Commission doesn't carry weight on the Supervisor's vote, but it should be said that the, the planning, the planners, the visionaries for the township that are looking into the future to make decisions, unanimously think this is, this is a terrible idea. So shouldn't the Supervisors take that into account? The law, C2 zoning law, which is the Wright property where they want to build the Wawa's zone C2, it's being exploited in Holland. Being, it's being stretched dramatically, it's being exploited. C2 means light commercial, professional offices, medical clinics, small shops and restaurants. It's not a mega gas station. Wawa is a heavy-use business, and it's the antithesis of C2 zoning in Holland. If the Wawa don't fit, you must resist. Vote against it. The 2014 Holland master plan, which apparently is gone, doesn't apply. How many, how much tax, how many tax dollars and how much time was spent on that, nobody knows, but it's gone. It doesn't apply anymore, apparently. And, but yet, the new Wawa plan, which was, to my knowledge, developed in the last two to three years, is set in stone. It can't be changed. We can't make, you know, it's, it's a fight to go from 16 to 12 gas pumps. I mean, why is that? Why could the 2014 master plan be thrown out the window, but this new plan is set in stone?
Start to wrap up, okay?
Okay. Yeah, they mentioned the mill race. I know there's a development under, underway there, but 21 years, it's been blighted.